For roll call, I see Anne, Scott, Leanne, and Susan is the alternate who will be seated is our fifth member in myself. So we've got a full commission tonight. Item three is addition or changes to the agenda. And on the agenda on item five that talks about an open public hearing. We won't do that tonight. And item seven, the executive session will not do that tonight either. So does anybody else have any addition or changes to the agenda? Hearing none, we'll go on to public speak and Hank or Mike, do you have anything you want to talk about other than the referral that you'll talk about is the next item?
No, I'm all set.
Okay. Yeah, very good. Moving on to new business, the first item is as we mentioned in our last meeting, I got a request for an 824 referral from Eric Anderson for a couple of properties that are abutting some town property just north of Oak Farms Road off of Boston Hill Road. And so I asked Mike to come and make that proposal to us. I think everybody here should have had the opportunity to read the the report that was put out and quite extensive. But Mike, I'll turn it over to you.
Well, okay. Well, thank you. Yeah, there's here's a nice report from the ERT team and Hank and Carrie within my group were part of the report reporting. They each have pieces in there. But we got good reviews from that and that the land is good. It contains some things that should be saved. It's a young forest, they're saying. So it's when they, when you put the three pieces of land, the Land Trust has two pieces, one is a little over seven acres and another one that's about, just about an acre over by itself and back of the Paula King area. And the Talbot property is a gem of the whole thing here. And we got a lot of good things said about that. We saw a lot of nice place and as Carrie put in there that it's pretty well free of you know, the barberry and some of the other invasive species. So it's it's, you know, we have water on the property. There's rivers. It's just nice to behold, but when you put those three pieces together with a couple of town pieces, it's horseshoe over 37 acres long. So it's it's just nice property and unfortunately it's landlocked. There's no way where there's a couple of things they suggested, but a lot of them buying the Morgana property is out of sight right now. So we have to be satisfied with what we have.
Okay.
I don't know if there's anything specific you want to talk about.
Can I jump in, Mike? I'd just like to also add that, you know, this, this, these properties are part of in the Towns Plan of 2015 Plan of Conservation and Development, there are three designated open space corridors that are included in the mapping. One of them is called the Western Highlands Corridor, and that's where these properties fall within. They're in the northern tip of that. That corridor stretches from the southwestern boundary of the town where the whole Bishop Swamp System is, which has a lot of protected land that goes over into Camp Hyodee over on the, off the border. And it runs north through the Monument Hill area up until the, into Bolton. So that core, these properties are associated with that northern part of the corridor, a budding town land in that which is the Burnett Brook watershed. So from a strategic conservation standpoint, they helped to build some some protected open space within a corridor that, you know, ideally, we would be able to build out through other conservation easements or acquisitions or or purchase and development rights down the road.
Okay, thank you, Hank. Would any questions or comments from any of the commission members at this time? Hearing none, and I didn't have any either. Would somebody like to make a motion that the town accept?
Hello?
Yes, Leanne, go ahead.
Hi, I guess I was on mute and I didn't know it. Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Where was the report?
It's on the website. I have copies at my house. I made a few copies of the report, but it's on the website under the Conservation Commission.
Leanne, I tried to send that to you by email as well.
I didn't get it. I have two emails on file, an AOL one that's still active and a Gmail one, and I didn't get it at either one.
Okay, I will, after we're done here, I will look to see what email address I sent to you on, and I will do a test send out. It was a very impressive report. It was like 30 pages and in maybe, Leanne, if you send me an email, I can attach the report to it and get it back to you. And that way I make sure that that I have the best email to send stuff out to you going forward.
Okay, because I got something from you. Okay, because I did get something recently from you about the bylaws. But this that we're talking about now doesn't sound familiar, so I'm not up to speed on what we're even talking about, I guess. Other than I'm familiar with the Talbot property. We had done a, if that's, if that's the same, is this the same property on Long Hill or is this somewhere else that he owns in town?
This is, this is in back of the where the Giles and Paula King live, in back of that area.
Okay, so that's off, well, I don't know where Paula King lives, but I think I know where the Giles live.
Mindy, can you allow me to share? I'm going to try and share a picture from the report.
Yep, I'm making you the co-host, so you should be able to share.
Okay, so this is, this is one of the pictures in the report. Can you see that, Leanne?
Yes, I mean, it's really tiny, but I can see it on the screen. I can't read it.
I was going to try and get something off the Zillow and just chose to go with this, but you can see here where my cursor is, is Oak Farms Road. And there's a big piece of property, you know, at the end of the cul-de-sac there. Here in red is the town property. Here's another piece of the town property. Here's the Talbot property that we're talking about that joins those two together. And then the Northern Connecticut Land Trust has got this little L upside down L shape, you know, here, and then this little sliver over here. So it does make a bit of a U. I don't know who owns this in the middle, but, but it does connect these two town pieces and and so with, you know, the value of the land, you know, being good from a conservation perspective on its own, the fact that it ties two town pieces together and makes it one larger piece, I think is a great deal for the town.
And this is the Talbot property?
Yes, the Talbot property. And then these two other pieces here, this long sliver just to the west of Talbot and Town Property. And then over here, further to the west is those are both from the Northern Connecticut Land Trust. So all three of those properties would be donated to the town.
Okay, so are these related? I know you said one belongs to Tom Talbot and the other one belongs to the Land Trust. Is this a coincidence that they're being potentially donated and considered, or was this a, some kind of coordinated thing to do with trying to match up existing town land?
They both came to us, Leanne. Both the Land Trust and Tom.
Okay, I was just wondering if they happened, I mean, if, you know, they talked to each other, so to speak, or, I mean, it may not make a material difference. If this is just a coincidence that they both came forward or if they happen to?
There's no indication they talked to each other. Matter of fact, I had to get Tom the information so we could talk to the Land Trust during the process.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. With that then, can I get a motion to, to accept the, the three pieces of property that are donated to the town pursuant to, you know, section 824 of Article 126 of the Connecticut State General Statutes. All moved. Okay, thank you, Scott.
Second.
Was that you, Susan, the second in it?
Yes, it is.
Thank you, Susan. Any other discussion on the referral?
Just one other thing, Leanne, again, is there, are these completely being donated? Or is there any portion or any other consideration that there's any town money involved?
We're going to have to do a deed search on these things and the town will come up with that. Tom is going to pay all the, all the transfer fees and everything of his own property. So if we, there would be very little to do from the town.
Okay, so it would be more like maybe real estate costs or something like that than it would be acquisition money?
That's right.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, a call for a vote. Anne?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
Leanne?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. The motion carries 500. In anticipating the, the recommendation that we do pursue getting the land. Here's a draft of a letter that I came up with to send back to the Board of Selectmen tomorrow after, after our vote tonight. And and it says that. So I'll give you just a minute or two to look through that. I plagiarized heavily out of Mike's letter to the Board of Selectmen and the, the report and I was just pleased that both Mike and Hank showed up tonight. As we're looking at these properties, I'm starting to get a feel for how the Conservation Commission and the Planning and Zoning Commission can work together to make these things happen. Any comments on the letter that, that I've got there?
I think the letter's fine, Jed.
I think it looks good.
Okay, thank you. And
Nice letter, Jed.
Yep, thanks, Scott. So I will get this off to Eric tomorrow to pass on to the Board of Selectmen and and that'll be that. So Mike and Hank, thank you for joining us tonight to get this to a happy conclusion.
You have the little piece of land on there. I see the 7 or the 8.4 and the 7.8 or 3 there.
Yeah.
Little piece.
I thought, I thought the
It's included in that.
That little strip was in the 8.54.
I think it is. I think it is. Yeah.
Yeah, you're probably right. That's right.
Yes.
You got it.
That's, there's only two numbers there that, you know, give us like 16 acres. So that's
That's correct. That's correct.
Yeah.
Okay. And on behalf of the Conservation Commission, I'm sure, you know, Mike and I both appreciate the time, the opportunity for you to consider the, you know, the properties and, and working with us as a commission.
Sounds good. Thank you very much. And you're both certainly welcome to hang around, but if you got other things to do, I understand that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda was the proposed regular meeting dates for the coming calendar year. And Jim or Mindy, can you get a copy of that put up for us here so we can take a look at it? There we go. So I asked, well, Jim and I were talking about coming up with our, our calendar for meetings next year and Jim said he'd put together a list in January and February where both our normal meeting date would be precluded because of a holiday. And those are the only two months that that becomes an issue where we're not meeting on the third Monday of the month. Jim asked me when I'd, I thought we should have the meeting and I said, well, we've been, we've been doing the, the following Monday as a matter of course, and I thought that worked out pretty well. So that's what the list has for the January, February would be the fourth Monday instead of the third. And other than that, through all the third Monday.
This is Jim and I do have a comment on that.
Yep.
The bylaws call for a meeting that falls on a holiday to be held the following evening.
It does. And so congratulations. I was wondering who else probably looked at the bylaws to, to see what was in there?
I didn't look at them until after I did the list, so.
Yep, yep. So you were trapping me, Jim. You got me to violate the bylaws. So I, I thought we would discuss that a little bit tonight. We've got a couple of options. We can delay the meeting by 24 hours and go on Tuesday nights, or we can go to the you know, the following Monday and we could change the bylaws to reflect that. The, the thing that I thought was nice about going to the following Monday as opposed to the 24 hour delay is that sometimes after you have a long holiday weekend, there's a bunch of other stuff that you're, you're behind on now because we've enjoyed a holiday weekend. And maybe that first day after the long weekend isn't the best one to hold a meeting. That was the only downside I could come up with it. And I really didn't care one way or another. I can, I can support either. I just wondered, well, I agree with Jim, we ought to do what our bylaws say. And since we're ready to issue a revised set of bylaws, I can make them, change them to reflect the, the following Monday if that's what works best for everybody. Anybody got any thoughts on that?
Leanne, Leanne, don't, don't we usually just do it the following Monday? As long as I've ever done it, I think we did.
Well, I think we just sort of, it seems to me we've done at least several of them on on the, like the following Thursday. I don't think we've always done it on the Thursday or the Monday. I do remember some Monday meetings like you're talking about. You know, and some of it depends on whether or not there's a room available. So I think we've done, I think we've done a couple of things.
It's dependent on the calendar.
Yeah, I was going to have a question. When I was on before, there used to be a commission that met on the fourth Monday. That's why we could never do it that way. I don't know if that's changed.
Jim, you said you were going to be looking at the, at the town calendar to see if there were any conflicts with us holding it on the fourth Monday?
I did. And the only the only conflict was the Republican Town Committee and the Planning and Zoning Commission could bump them.
But if, if we meet by Zoom, it's not going to be an issue unless it's an issue of somebody having to attend another Zoom meeting. But, I mean, just speaking for myself, I'm pretty flexible. I don't have any conflicts that come up routinely.
What was the, what was the conflicting meeting, Jim? I don't really want to bump anybody out of their normal spot.
It's the Republican Town Committee.
Okay, yep. And so they so they don't require the services of our board clerk. So the board clerk would be available for us to do Zoom and and I think with the, the perturbations in the schedule being January and February, we would have we're still going to be doing Zoom meetings at that point. I am very confident of that. And so I don't think we're, we're in an issue there. I so I guess I would prefer to go with, with the following Monday just because I do think that's, that's what we've been. I do recall, Leanne, where we were meeting on some Thursdays there for a while when the room's not available. And maybe I'll provide some latitude in our bylaws to give us, you know, say something like, we'll be held within a week. And that allows us the flexibility if, if rooms, rooms get tight again and that sort of thing. But given that, is, is somebody willing to make a motion to approve the the, the calendar for 2021 regular meeting dates for the Planning and Zoning Commission?
All moved.
Thank you, Scott.
A second.
Thank you, Anne. And any, any other discussion on, on that?
This is Joe. I just want to note that I will file this with the town clerk as required by the FOI, Connecticut FOI Act.
Yep.
So these will be the regular meetings.
Yep, very good.
Any other meeting will be a special meeting.
Any other discussion? Okay, call for a vote. Anne?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
Leanne?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. So the motion for the calendar meetings is approved. 500. Moving on to old business. First on the old business, I put in here the property of Susan and Peter Clock. Scott, did you have anything you wanted to add on that at this point?
No, that, the, I called the real estate agent and he said that they have a deposit on the property.
Okay, so I guess that will preclude any further discussion on that than that opportunity is come and gone. So moving on to 6B is the bylaws review in there were, there were did everybody get the, the copy of the updated bylaws that I had sent out this week?
Yes.
Yes, Jed, this is Leanne again. I did get that and I just, that came through on my AOL email. And now I'm seeing something from, I guess, Jim today. It says zoning about the calendar that we just discussed. And I do have an email from you talking about the donated property that we just finished talking about, but there's no attachment. It's, it's like you forwarded a message from Eric, I think. I minimized it. But, so I did get that from you, but I don't see a report attached.
Okay.
If it wasn't attachment.
It, it was and did, did the other, other members get the attachment that went forwarded with what I sent out?
Yes, I did.
Yep, okay. So we'll have to figure out, Leanne.
I got, I got an email from you, Jed, with no attachment, but somewhere along the line, I got, I got the report and read it.
Okay.
The one I had the attachment on was titled Forward 8-24 Referral.
Yep, that, that was the one. And that had, that had the attachment at the bottom.
Right.
And I know with different email accounts, sometimes it's hard to find where those attachments get hidden. They aren't always jumping right out at you. Anyhow, the, the other comment, so with my recommendation is that we, we discuss to approve the bylaws that were sent out. I think I, in the email I sent out the bylaws on, I had Leanne's comments and how I adjudicated each of those. I had sent out, I think Susan had made some comments on the bylaws before. No, Susan's comments were on the annual report. So we talked about that previously. The only comments I got on the bylaws were from Leanne. And then if, if everybody's happy with, with the version of the bylaws, the two things I would like to consider, we already talked about the wording for the calendar on when the meeting would be if it's perturbed by a holiday. And as I say, I think I can make it that we would have, the meeting would be rescheduled for within a week. The the second thing that came up is Jim was recommending that we put in the, in in the agenda that's listed in the bylaws. Jim thought we should add executive session. And then, you know, nine times out of 10, we're not going to have an executive session and it wouldn't, wouldn't be an issue. As I was thinking about that originally, I, I thought maybe hopefully I will never do an executive session. And I could, if we, if we did have to, I could do it in the addition, changes to the agenda. Because I think it would be key specific as to where in the agenda we would want to have that. I don't know that it would always fall in the same spot. But I've not I, I don't feel strongly one way or another on, on that particular issue. Happy to add it, happy to leave it off. Was looking for some input from the other commission members on that. Any thoughts?
My thought is if it's only rarely used, then probably just being able to add it in at the additions and changes to the agenda, it would be the way to do it.
Any other thoughts?
The only reason I suggested it, in the case of a special meeting, you wouldn't be able to do that. And it would just be there as a placeholder of sorts.
So, so you're saying, Jim, that if we were holding a special meeting and we didn't have it on the agenda because we can't add to the agenda, we wouldn't be able to do that?
Right.
Okay.
Hopefully, it's never an issue. I just, it's just, it's very often done.
And, and I would hope that if, if we had an item where we need to address the executive session, that Jim, you and I would be smart enough to add that into the special meeting agenda. Because it ought to be near and dear to our hearts. It wouldn't be something that would be overlooked.
I do have one other issue.
Go ahead.
Membership, membership paragraph, section one speaks to the CGS 9167. I believe it should actually be 167A. And if you read it, the math doesn't really work. It says, talks about four members out of five, generally two thirds. And the two thirds comes right out of the statute for more than nine members. It only, it has, statute actually has a chart. It goes from three to nine. This is the number of This is the number of total membership and then maximum from one party.
Okay.
So I'm suggesting that we just simply add the A to 167.
Well, I just made, Jim, because I want to, I'm going to try and bring up the article that you're talking about. so right here, I think, is the CGS 9167.
Yes.
Limit to maximum number of members, generally two-thirds of the total who may belong to the same political party. For a commission of five members, this means that no more than four may belong to the same political party. And that, that came right out of that chart that you were looking at, Jim. Because I, I did, you know, I knew that it was going to be tricky math of two-thirds of five.
Okay.
And so they did have that chart in the statutes, the town charter, that I took the number four out of, rather than just putting the whole chart in there, because we're always a commission of five.
It's just that the two-thirds is, is, when they speak of two-thirds, we're talking of nine members or more. It just looks confusing to me.
And that's why I put the answer in there.
Okay.
Yep. Now, is it, you're technically incorrect that I don't have the A after that 167?
I would say yes.
Okay.
Definitely. There's not a dot after, it's 167A. There's no dot after 167. There's no parentheses or anything like that.
Okay. Yep. The, okay, did, so I will, again, what I'm going to look for here is approval of the bylaws with additional changes that we agreed to tonight. And at this point, I've got the 167A and I've got the, the timing of the postponed meetings. Any other comments on, on the bylaws?
I'm still trying to look at what I had written to you and then this.
Okay, yep.
And I thought you had kind of combined them. And maybe I'm, I, I had your email up from just recently, now that I found it. And I thought you had drawn some arrows or something regarding what I had said.
Nope, I'm not talented enough to draw any arrows on that email going back to you.
Let me see.
If, if you had, if there was a specific comment, I can maybe remember what I did. I know there was one about the town admin, the assistant town administrators and I changed that.
Yeah.
And then the first, first comment was, you know, several things look confusing. And when I talked to Mark Brants, we did take it directly out of the charter. So it's, it is what it is there and it matches our charter. So that's, that way.
Okay, well, that was my main other question. And I had, I'm, I thought I had something at the end about maybe, I, I can't bring this up. I see something that's really, really tiny. I can't read it and I'm trying to bring up again your email. My only other question that comes to mind anyway was, and you had, you said you double checked with Eric about the wording of the charter, because I thought the selectman made a change to the part about how any vacancy gets filled. But you said you've since then talked to Eric and he said the charter, as it appears that you pulled it from, is what's current.
That's correct.
So Scott, the selectman didn't make any change over the summer about what you do for people submitting their names when there's a vacancy?
I think it was just that it all goes through the town clerk from now on. Doesn't go to the
Okay.
Board chairs anymore.
Okay.
Town clerk.
The, the other question that you had, Leanne, and it's a good one to, to discuss, and I was trying to find it in here, then, and so, and I can't stumble into it right off the top of my head, but it talked about when can alternates participate in vote? And so let's say we were fortunate enough to have some alternates that weren't seated. If we were having a discussion like this, they would be able to participate in that discussion with us, even though they weren't seated and, and were not able to vote on anything. The only exception, the only exception is if we had a public hearing, the alternates can all participate in the public hearing, but when the seated commission members discuss acting on the, the item that was discussed at the public hearing and the regular meeting that follows the public hearing, alternates who are not seated cannot discuss at that point. It is only the seated members of the commission that are able to discuss the, the application that we had the public hearing on. And they can discuss it because they're going to vote on it. And so that's the only exception there. And I tried to make that a little more clear. I just can't remember where, where that is right this minute and
Article eight, maybe?
Jed, I'm assuming that's a statutory, that mirrors the statute. It's not something that's kicking to Andover's Planning and Zoning Commission.
It, it is, it is not. That is statutory and that, that was the feedback I got from Mark Brants as well, is that, you know, that's the one time that they can't participate. So, and, and it's, you're not, you would think it would be in Article eight and so here, here we come. I think this might be it. Unseated alternates may take part in commission discussion, except for deliberations on an application in a public hearing, which was held in close. So anyhow, that's, that's what the words mean. And so I think we understand it and maybe it's a little confusing where it's written there, but we've got to deal with that. So given, given all that, I would
If, if you go back to the membership, Jed, you say there's five members and two-thirds, which would be 3.334.
Yep.
So wouldn't it be three and not four?
No, 3.33. So three members is not two-thirds, which is 3.33. It takes the fourth member to get that extra third. And so that's why it, it has to round up to four people, because if we only had three people, we wouldn't have two-thirds.
I guess.
And it's just, you know, a function of the small number of people we have on the commission that the math goes, not as you would expect there. And that's why I put the answer in there of that means four people. Now, it doesn't, it, it also says, you know, just so everybody knows, that we might end up with five people all from one party, if we don't have anybody from the other party that wants to be a member. We don't have to hold a seat vacant while we're trying to get somebody from a different political party to, to sign on to the commission.
Are you sure?
I am sure.
Okay, I've just never heard of that before. I don't, I don't know differently. I've just never heard of that being the case before on anything, not just us.
Yep, well, and, you know, because Scott, when, on my initial draft of the bylaws, I didn't have any of the words about the political parties in there. And Scott asked about that, so I went back and, and took it right out of the charter. And so the, the bottom three lines here, "The law does not guarantee a minor party representation on the board, however, and the number of parties that candidates represent during elections does not change the requirement." So I think that means that if all we had were Democrats or all we had were Republicans and we didn't have a mix, that, that doesn't preclude us from filling the commission so that we can do the commission business.
Did you say that came from the statutes into the charter? Or do we know how it got in the charter?
All I did was look at the charter. So if it, I didn't take the charter back anyplace else to validate that the charter was correct. I just used the words that were in our charter.
And what section is that?
I don't know off the top of my head and I'm not prepared to call up the town charter right now either. I can, yeah.
Okay, it just sounds strange to me. I had pulled up the charter because of what we, I was questioning in the, in my suggestions about how to fill a vacancy. So I had the charter up, but if you don't have it right there, that's fine. It just sounds, it doesn't sound familiar to me that you can do that.
Historically, it hasn't been done that way.
Well, historically, I think we've always had a mix. You know, and, and again, you can have four of the same party, so it's not hard to at least have one from the other party. But right now, we've got a, a pretty good balance, I think. So we're, we're in pretty good shape on that. I just wish
And the other thing that's come up, go ahead.
Nope, I, I just wish we had more alternates so that maybe we could worry about that.
Well, I was going to say, it's, it's come up over the years. Again, I don't know what the law is exactly. That's why I asked if you knew whether or not this, the language in the charter was pulled from the statutes. I've just never heard of a, of member, like whether it's us or the Board of Finance or anybody, an elected board being allowed to have five members of one party, whether it's just custom in Andover or whether that really is the case that you can do that. It seems to me it's come up, I know it has over the years, that we took the political affiliation of the alternates into consideration also, as far as doing the kind of math that Jed was just doing. Again, I don't know what the law is offhand, or maybe it's just always worked out that way, that you don't have five Democrats or five Republicans and, and, you know, nobody else unless they're an alternate. But I guess we're not going to solve it tonight. Like I said, I just, it, it's just sounded odd to me.
It, it does sound a little odd. Hopefully we don't get into that predicament, but the bylaws, you know, those words were in there when I sent it over to Mark Brants for his review and he didn't have a comment on it.
I'm not sick, I just swallowed something funny.
Okay, I guess at this point, I'd like to have a motion that the bylaws is presented, be approved with, with two subsequent changes, that the article of the statutes 167 be revised to 167A. In the rescheduling of town meetings, be stated that the, the meeting will be held within a week of the original date.
All moved.
Thank you, Scott.
I'll second, Leanne.
Thank you, Leanne. Any last minute discussion before we go to a vote? Hearing none, a call for a vote, Ann?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
Leanne?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. The, the bylaws passed 5-0-0. And we didn't have to get into the tricky math for whatever the percentage was in the last, last article that talks about approving bylaws. Okay, we're going to jump down to item eight, Administrator Report, Jim?
Yeah, ongoing permitting, a number of, one home going up, a number of additions, et cetera. I do have one recent complaint regarding people living on, on a property in trailers at 44 Wales. And a letter went out with a, a date certain to contact me, so I'll be working on that.
You say you did send a letter out to them, Jim?
I did, yes.
Okay.
And I will follow up on that. And I did, I actually went with the wetlands agent to the sand pit at 517, the gravel pit at 517 Route 6, just to familiarize himself with the site. And we're, working with the engineer, Chris Bell, the applicants engineer to put together a restoration plan.
Did Bell meet you out there?
I'm sorry?
Did the, did the engineer Bell meet you out there?
No, he did not.
So Jim, can you say that again? You went out there by yourself or?
I went out there with, I went out with Chris Bell about three weeks ago, I believe. And then more recently, I went out with, just with the wetlands agent.
Okay, so Scott, or someone started to ask you if Chris and the agent have met together and you said no, not so far?
Yeah.
So how did everything look out there, Jim?
Well, it looks like we need to start restoration. And other than that, it looks fairly, fairly good. Hopefully they'll be wrapping it up soon.
Does the property owner agree that we need to start restoration?
Well, the engineer did. When, the engineer was, had agreed to put together a plan.
Okay.
So how far are they through the project?
I would say they're on phase three. So it's roughly 100 feet each phase from the back, in the back of the property towards the road. So they're in phase three.
Okay.
But, I mean, seems to, you know, still fences intact, the berm is, is holding waters, there's no water, no water anywhere.
Right.
That's all we have.
What, and what did you find? Did you go up to, up to 44 Wales Road yet?
I did.
Was it a valid complaint?
Yes, I mean, I'm certain it is. I have not been able to contact the gentleman that filed the claim. It just, his phone doesn't appear to be working or something. Yes, it appears to be a valid complaint. No, unfortunately, that, that particular site, it was, you know, it's been operating over the years as various, well, as, as various things and never really had a site plan per se. So it's, it's, it's hard to have them clean up other than sort of health, health related items. But the specific claim was, was people living in the prop, on the property. And that's a prohibited use under section four of the regulations.
Right. It's always been a garage, ever since I can remember for 60 years.
Yeah, it was the old school bus. It was for school buses at one point.
Off Palmer.
And so, kind of, and then it was, Leanne was making, Leanne Palmer was making septic tanks there, concrete tanks. there, concrete tanks.
Yeah.
But the trailers are prohibited, right?
Yes.
So is that the actual violation, Jim, that they're out there living in a trailer?
Yes.
Okay. There might be some septic related additional concerns, but-
Yeah, I mean, my plan is to, is to initiate conversation and go from there, whether I should bring the Health Department in. I mean, if he agrees to comply, then the health issue goes away. If he doesn't, then I bring in the Health Department.
Okay, anything else for Jim? Moving on to item nine, approval of the meeting minutes from September 21st, 2020.
I'll move to approve the minutes of September 21st. Was it 2020?
Thank you, Leanne. I have a second.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Scott. Any discussion on those minutes?
I do have a comment on page two, second full paragraph, talks about a waiver request pertaining to soil erosion. I think the, I think off-site topography should be inserted there. Pertaining to off-site topography, I believe that's what that would be the waiver requests. Was being referred to, I believe.
Okay, so where would this specific, the waiver, so it would read about a waiver request for topography?
Pertaining, okay, pertaining, and then see to, to off-site topography.
Oh, I, I see, yep. Any, any other comments on the minutes? I've got one comment on the same page, fourth line up from the bottom, Mindy, at the second to the last word, you've got an "and" that's missing an "m". And then on page four, the bottom paragraph, the second sentence in format of the, it says wetland mission statement. I think that should be planning and zoning mission statement. And those were the only comments that I had. Anybody else?
Well, one thing that I was puzzled with, maybe I just missed it before, under eight for discussion, talking about the 57 Hendy Road. Down a little bit, it says there was a mistake made, they need 400 feet of frontage. I thought it was 200 feet that was needed, was that?
I think you're right, Anne. The, the requirement is 200 foot of frontage.
I believe, I believe it was, I'm not, it doesn't refer me, I believe the reference was to Jason Lott as well.
That, that, we certainly were, were talking about that, and that's the one that was approved without sufficient, without any frontage.
But, but I think that's what-
And that's the mistake that was made.
I think that I made that comment, you need 400 total on there.
Well, it'd be 400 feet of frontage for two lots.
For two lots.
The one that was improperly approved and the one that they're trying to get approved.
Maybe it needs to be approved there.
So I think there was a mistake made, they need 400 feet of frontage for two lots, and they currently have 46 feet. And again, that doesn't, that doesn't provide a solution, that just shows how much frontage is lacking.
It reflects what was said in the meeting, that's all.
Yeah.
Okay.
I do have one other comment.
Go ahead, Jim.
I thought the, the minutes were done very well. I just wanted to point that out. Mindy, second, second crack at him.
Thank you.
Yeah, and they went out, I think they went out, I think, within a day and a half or a day or so.
Yep, no, excellent job, Mindy, very well done.
Very detailed.
Yep, probably more detail that is specifically required, but I do, I do think it's good from a historical perspective on being able to go back and try to figure out what it was that we were talking about, so.
I agree.
Thank you.
Much better to have too much than too little.
So with all that discussion, I'll call for a vote. Anne?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
Leanne?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. The minutes are approved 500. Moving on to item 10 miscellaneous items, I, I have two things, one, the I did not get it ready so that I could present it here tonight, but hopefully everybody saw an email where I got ahold of Thad King about the septic tank issues, you know, and when, when sampling is to be required for our discussion over on 12 Webster Lane. In in while, you know, that, that given point in time, well, I guess it doesn't even say it's preferred, it just says if, in general, you can, you can sample anytime, but here's a bunch of attributes, and if these attributes are present, then it has to be sampled during the, you know, period March through May or whatever was in our regulations there. But our regulations where, where it talked about approval during that period did have the caveat unless directed or specified by the town sanitarium, and Thad King is, is our representative, you know, for the town of Andover, over at Eastern Highlands Health District, so I, I consider him to be essentially our town sanitarium make that call to go out and do that testing for us. He did, you know, I did ask about the distance from the wetlands, and he really didn't have a big concern about that so much one way or another. He thought that was a wetlands agency decision. But he also volunteered to, to come and meet with us and talk septic systems at some point in time. And I've spent a bunch of time working with Jim on the lake rigs, which has a big section on septic tank improvements. And so I figure when we, as a commission, get around to discussing the lake rigs, and we get to the septic tank section on the lake rigs, that might be a great time for Thad to show up, join us, and, and help us understand and make sure we're doing all the right things to, to protect the lake when we get to that section. Unless somebody had a desire, a burning desire to hear from him sooner. The, the second thing I had for the miscellaneous discussion is I am hopeful that by our next meeting we'll be ready to start talking the lake rigs again. You know, we spent, Jim, John Valeni and I have spent a couple of Wednesday afternoons working on trying, so that I understand how the nutrient allocation worksheet works, and, and the regulations that we're trying to put into effect, and I think I'm starting to get an inkling where I can at least discuss the regulations where we left off with all of you folks, and it makes some sense out of it. And so, I'm counting on doing that at our next meeting, and so maybe we won't get done in an hour on the next meeting. I'm hoping we wrap up pretty soon tonight. This is money in the bank for the next meeting, that may run a little out of the long side, but it won't exceed whatever our bylaws say. I think it was 10:30, and we'll be done way before 10:30, one way or the other.
Thank you for doing that, Jim and Jed. Very important.
Well, and, so the last part, part of the rigs discussion, is I did give the presentation to the Alma Alpoa meeting this past Wednesday. And aside from some technical difficulties, where I thought we would be doing a Zoom meeting, and it turned out to be some Google meeting that I wasn't familiar with how to present on, and for some reason my microphone wasn't compatible with that system, and so it sounded like I was breathing the helium balloon and then talking. I called in on my cell phone and had the discussion that way. The discussion went very well with them, and they were very supportive, and, and trying to get the, the lead in to my presentation was when Linda Derrick, who's the president of Andover Lake Management Association, was briefing on the water sampling that was done this summer, in the amount of weeds growing in the lake, and the algae growing in the lake, to the people who are doing the sampling, and that was done by Hillary, who works for George, you know, they got something to do with the lake stuff. They found the, the amount of weeds and algae at a shocking level. So that made it pretty easy to go in and get the support of the, the people around the lake for trying to keep the lake cleaned up and get it there. So they were all in favor of that.
It's at a shocking level that weed growth?
Yes. And, and we did have a lot of weeds this year. You know, the water clarity was very clear, that the water was probably as clear as it's ever been, and maybe that contributed to the sunlight getting down there to the plants to help them grow, but we did have an awful lot of weeds growing in the lake this year. And part of it was attributed to the lack of a good freeze last year. You know, the lake never really froze at all.
Yeah.
But it made a receptive audience. They were all interested in what we could do to make the lake better.
Was, was the weed growth different from other years?
I don't know. I do know that at one point in time, where I lived, there was a big algae bloom that went someplace else fast for a while, but I think it was still kinda in place when they were doing the sampling. I, I saw them out there sampling one day, and, and there were a fair amount of weeds there. I have had in previous years piles of weeds, you know, blow up onto my shore that I raked out of the lake, and, and I didn't have that this year. But, so I think it comes and goes, but if the scientist can say that we had lots of weeds in the lake, I think that's a good thing to get people on board with supporting the lake.
Right, it is, yeah.
And so, I have asked Linda to send me the report, so I have that, and I can use that as part of the discussion on, on building the rigs. But all, and all that went pretty good, and so I do think we are, are ready to start, I think they're very close, and we'll just get started on that again, and see how it goes. Hey, that was it for my miscellaneous items. I don't see anybody from the public here, so I'll go on to item 12, commission, open discussion. Anybody have anything out there that they would like to talk about tonight?
Is there any information or anything going on about that property that sort of went between the corn road and the pine ridge?
Jim, you want to answer that?
Yes, it's my, it's my understanding that the, the owners of the property, current owners are preparing to go to the next wetlands meeting. Whether that happens or not, I don't know. For, for crossing wetlands permit.
Okay.
And they would, the next step would be a subdivision.
Yeah.
They may or may not make the, the next, the November meeting, wetlands.
Okay. So-
Any other, go ahead, Anne.
So it looks like it would be quite a while before they would be actually building on that piece of property. It would take-
I mean, if it takes three months to get through wetlands and two months to get through the Planning and Zoning Commission, put them sometime in March, I believe.
Because one of the owners is looking to get some relief in the tuition for their child at the school, and they're saying, no, they're gonna be building, and we just didn't want to be giving it, the Board of Ed is big concerned about giving a tuition break to somebody who hasn't yet. Teacher.
I don't think it'll be for this school year.
No, I didn't think so. Looks like it's too far away still.
Yep.
Okay.
Anybody else? Hearing none, I guess we have no choice but to ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn at 8:08.
Thank you, Leanne.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Scott. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. Anne?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
Leanne?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, the motion passes 500. Thank you, everybody, and have a great rest of your evening, and look forward to discussing the lake rigs for you next time around.
Okay.
Good night.
Thanks.
Good night.